It's called, you say, bring it to high grade.
I'm ready.
We'll get a couple of them.
Planning Commission meeting for September 6, 2022. It's called to order. Please, we just have the pledge.
Everyone place your right hand over your heart and ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you please do the roll call.
Commissioner Gold?
I'm here.
Commissioner Jamison?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Present.
Chair Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to make any changes to the order of the agenda?
I would just like to make a comment if I can. Since we just got the traffic study for the project we supposedly approved last time, I would like to put this at the end of our meeting and at least give us a chance to make that we actually looked at the traffic study before we approved the project again. It's just a suggestion. We did not have this traffic study until just now.
Correct, which we have not had enough time to review.
Right. So if that's agreeable, that's what I'm suggesting.
So we'll add it under item six, discussion items, after we've gone through the rest of the agenda.
Sure, sure.
Point of order, I'm not sure if I'm right, but I don't know if we can talk about that item, that project, because it's not agendized. Maybe a neighbor down the street would want to come talk about that.
Well, that's a good point.
I don't want to delay the project. I can't vote on it. I'm conflicted on. I'm just saying from maybe the city attorney or planning director would tell us if we can even have that discussion, or is this just information? Anyway, I'm just asking.
Or should we add it to our next meeting agenda?
The Lori Tamora, planning consultant. We do have Carol Lynch from the attorney's office available to respond. This is not an agendized item, and so if the decision is to have this reviewed again, we can move it to, by your direction, to the next planning commission meeting for review of the public record, what action was taken, and how best to acknowledge the traffic study as part of the approval of that project.
Because the traffic study was kind of, the traffic situation was a little bit controversial on this project, just because of the location and turning left on to 246.
There were questions in regards to that turn improvement at the meeting. So I don't want to go any further into discussing.
So we can just direct you to do that if everybody's in agreement?
And we will work with city attorney's office also as to how to open up the record on a project that has already been approved. So we'll report back to you. We will agendize it, and we will report on how best to handle that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll open the meeting to public comment. Speakers are invited to come forward, speak on items not on the agenda and on the consent. So I have no speaker slips. Does anybody wish to speak in public comment? Seeing none here. How about online? Nope, see nobody there. We'll bring it back. Approval of the consent items, the minutes and the planning division current projects. If I get a motion either to discuss them or to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Just the minutes, not the, not both items on the consent. We can go through it. It's fine.
I'll make a motion to approve both from last meeting. Thank you.
Okay. You want to give a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That's the five oh. Public hearings, item 5A. Can we get the staff report on that, please?
Yes, the project before you is requested by the Solvang Senior Center to remove the existing facility that's located on the site. There's 2,900 square foot modular units, parking and related facilities. And then there's, and their proposal is to expand the facilities to about 1,000 square feet and 14 parking spaces and on about 16,000 square feet of land that has been leased or contracted with the county of Santa Barbara. I'll just go through a couple of the exhibits. So the, as you can see on the screen, are we able to get PowerPoint? I'll keep going. The site is located in the northeast corner of the county properties, fronting along Maple Drive. There's a driveway very close to where the facility will be located off of Maple, but the main address is off of Mission Drive, 1745 Mission Drive is the address for the whole complex. The project is a development plan, and it also outlines the times and dates and when the facility would be used throughout the day to serve the seniors. It will be available in the evenings and the afternoons, late afternoons, for the general public. There is some comments in regards to how it would relate to the surrounding neighborhood, and mainly the concern about noise generated by either music, broadcasting, outdoor events. And so we've provided some conditions of approval for how the facility would be operated so that you don't become a nuisance to the surrounding area. Staff is recommending approval of the project, and we are available for any questions. We did get an additional comment letter from the fire department for their standard set of conditions, and so the record, the conditions have been amended, and so that'll be added as part of the conditions of approval. And we also received another comment letter from the county, oh, thank you. Okay, I'm just gonna, just for the record, those, they're not broadcasting. We did receive a letter from Santa Barbara County librarian concerned or asking questions about how access and ADA flow throughout the county complex and tied to the senior center. And the comment letter, which I believe you have a copy of, basically says that she would like to work with the senior center, with the county real properties division that manages the facilities, as well as the sheriff's office, to come up with a path of travel between the senior facility and the rest of the complex, particularly to the library. So that's not part of the project. That was a request that was made basically to the senior center to collaborate with the county and the sheriff's department. So those are the comment letters that we received on this project, and we're here to answer any questions and get approval, recommend approval.
Is there anybody from the senior center here?
Several people. You guys have questions?
I'm Alan Hitt, the co-chair of the steering committee. This is Jim Dummett, our designer, and we have our landscape architect, Kevin Small. We have Kevin Bates, who is our architect here, and Tom Olmstead is my fellow co-chair for the project. We've been working on this for five years, and we have met with the county multiple times and the city multiple times and all of the surrounding entities in that short vicinity several years ago to get cooperation from everyone, and we are now in this process for your approval then to submit to the building with after working drawings in. So we've spent a lot of time on it, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. That letter from parking is the first we've seen of in the last 10 minutes, so we're happy to work with anybody we will, that introduces questions to our project. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to address what we can.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll continue with public comment and then come back with questions.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this agenda item? In the audience? I can't read their names. I see two raised hands pointing out to me. Susan Bott, would you like to speak on this? Can you hear me?
Are you pulling it up?
Nope, she took her hand down. Well, let's go to, who was the other person that had their hand up?
Scotty Zimmerman, but he took his hand down.
Okay, well, we'll move ahead then, and if Susan gets back online, we'll let her speak, but we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anybody have?
Can I just ask a question? How long is your lease, the land lease with the county? I'm just more curious than anything.
Got it renewed. I think we have 48 years left, 47. We renewed it in 2018, approved by the board of supervisors.
For $0.
No cost. They are.
2018, the board of supervisors approved a 50-year lease at no cost for the senior center, and we submitted the preliminary project that we're looking at today to them along with the chief architect, and they are, love the project and, you know, for multiple reasons, but mostly we've raised all the money to build it, and they're happy to have a community center and senior center in Solvang, so that's it. Any other questions?
And it should be noted that the senior center has been working with real properties division at the county for the architectural design. This project did go through DRC. It has final approval from DRC, so it will not be returning back to them. And so all of the colors, materials, lighting, location, landscaping have been considered and recommended for approval. So they have collaborated with all of the different entities that would be part of this process.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? I have a couple. In the resolution, it says that one of the things we're approving is changes to the front and rear setbacks, but I didn't see anything in the paperwork that talked about that. So what is it that they're requesting exception on? Look at page 46.
I apologize, but I believe that that is already over from a previous resolution. They are not asking for any modifications.
So we're going to delete that from the resolution?
Right. Thank you for catching that.
And I had just one general question in looking through the drawings, which you very much appreciate. Thank you. You show solar panels on the roof, but there's no mention of solar panels anywhere except there's a picture of it. They're not called out in any of the specifications or anything. Are there going to be solar panels in?
Well, my name is Jim Dummett. I'm the designer. I believe we're required to have a solar array on all new buildings, and we plan to have that. It's photovoltaic, so it's got the best orientation at that location. And it's just my understanding that that's now a requirement for any building is to have solar.
But why isn't it documented anywhere other than a picture?
Well, this is the kinds of things that we're going to get further into during the building division for planning, DRC. At this time, those kinds of things aren't a requirement, but they will be as we go through the building permit process. The same thing, the public works issues aren't discussed sometimes at this stage of the process, the development approval, but they do come in consideration as we go through the final building permit approval.
Okay, good. I'm glad to see you have them. That was really my motivation in asking, are they going to be there or not?
Yeah, they're going to be there.
Okay, thank you. Just a knit on page 41, item B4. I think you should take out the word his and just leave or designee in there. Public Works Director, his designee. Doesn't always have to be a he. And on item C8, the design review is a committee, not a commission. And those are just knits, but I catch those things. And that's all I had. Does anybody else have any questions, concerned, issues?
I would just like to make a comment and congratulate all of you who have worked so diligently to get those little pieces of green that we need to build something like this. I know it took a lot of hard work, and you are all to be commended, and thank you. I look forward to participating. Yeah, and a few, like 18.
We still have a member of the public that's hands up. We're going to try to see if we can get her in.
Okay. Maybe she doesn't know her hands up.
No, I just, this is not about the senior center. I just want to speak to something that should have been at the beginning, but I couldn't get on.
You wanted to speak during public comment?
I'm sorry, what?
Or which item did you want to speak on?
Public comment, item number two.
So what we should do is finish this item?
Yeah.
And then we could bring back public comment?
Right, yeah. We'll hold that, Susan, until we finish this item, and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you very much.
I also would like to say, I think this is a great project. It's going to add a lot to the community, and it's well-designed. I really like it. Are there any other questions? Somebody want to make?
I just wanted to say, yeah, I'm not going to hold this up because it's a good project and seems to have got a lot of favorability, so yeah, let's make it happen.
So I'll make a motion if we, resolution number 22-10, move approval, including that, well, it's also the exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act and also approval of the project, so both, so the entire resolution.
With the, with the minor adjustments that Jack pointed out?
Sure. Leaving the reference to the non-existent setbacks.
And the setbacks, absolutely.
I'll second that.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Nobody? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
I'm just.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, keep up the good work.
I'm just, how do I, I'm just going to make one comment as I walk out the door. My name is Kathleen Campbell, and Willie Campbell was my mother, and I'm telling you, you guys just made her mighty happy tonight, so thank you very much.
Okay, let's go back to public comment, and let Susan speak. Are you ready to go, Susan?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Susan Bott, and I live at 160 Willow Drive in Solvang. My husband and I are struggling to cut back once more on our water usage to comply with your new drought measures. Considering the dire situation Solvang finds itself in regarding our water supply, I question the wisdom, but even the feasibility of approving any new development within the city. Wouldn't it be prudent to declare a moratorium on new development until we are out from under the drought restrictions? We can even go there and process applications, but with the understanding that no new projects making final approval until water is reliably available. This is not an unprecedented decision, as the leader declared a development moratorium in nineteen seventy-two during the prolonged drought at that time. Please consider such a measure to help Solvang survive this trying time. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Susan. Shall we move on to item six-A?
And I need to recuse myself, because I live too close to the project, so I guess I'll go outside.
Okay, the staff report, please.
Yes, Lori Tamora again presenting. This is a study session and briefing on the Mission Hotel and Apartment Project. This proposal is being brought forth by Mr. Ed St. George, and it is a follow-up to a number of previous meetings that have been on this project, both at the Planning Commission, City Council, and the Design Review Committee. Mr. St. George and his design team have taken into consideration many of the comments that have been brought forth, and we're here tonight to present to you a concept that they're now working towards completing and moving forward through the environmental review process. I think probably the best thing to do would be to have Julie come up and make her presentation, because I'll probably be saying the same things that she would be saying, and so, come on up.
Okay.
Hello, Honorable Chair, and the remainder of the Planning Commission. My name is Julie McEever, and I'm a project manager for Ed St. George, I work on a variety of his projects, this is one of them. Lori and her team asked us to come in and kind of give you a refresher of where we're at with the project. I know you've all seen this a number of times, and it has evolved over time. We think we're really coming close to a refined product, and I'm actually eager to show this to you. We had some fantastic feedback from the Design Review Committee, so we haven't had a chance to include all of that in our next middle, but we have addressed it as part of this presentation, so you can see the direction we're going on each one of those issues. Could you go to the next slide?
I'm trying.
I'm sorry.
Oh, there we go, okay.
Lori, I'm sorry, may I ask a question before we go further?
Sure.
While you're teeing up your computer there. What is the ask after this presentation today?
Today is a review of the project and any comments that you would like to provide, based on the materials presented. And no decision is being made here tonight.
Simply presentation.
Simply presentation, yes.
Thank you.
Basically, a design study session. It's not coming up. Can you help me? Yeah, I'm trying to do the slideshow, and it's from the beginning, and it's not coming up. They do have the materials, so if you want to move forward.
I'll give you a little bit of an overview, do you all have the presentation in front of you? Okay, those are the plans, so, not a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, which is probably the most valuable. But just to give you a little bit of historical character, you're all well aware that when Ed St. George first brought this project to the city of Solvang, it was a much larger project, it had anticipated quite a bit of underground parking.
I think, if I can interrupt, it's page seventy-eight, Lori?
Yes.
Is the slideshow?
No, if those are just the materials? Oh, yes.
Yeah, so she was, I showed the plans, she corrected me, and then I went through it, and I see it's right here.
Now, actually, let me, I'll go grab my copy of the PowerPoint.
You're right. You and I got to that page at the same time.
So maybe you could all repair to page one, or excuse me, page two, which, just going to give you an aerial overview of the site itself, so you can understand the meat and bounds of the site. Yes, there you go. And when we very first brought this to the city, it did not include the arm that is 533 Pine Street that you'll see over on the right-hand side. And that had been acquired by Ed St. George initially as a point of entry into the project. Do you have a little more considerate point of entry into the project itself? We've since had a number of conversations with neighbors that live on Pine Street. We've also engaged ATE to do a parking and traffic study. And of course, that dialogue, it became abundantly clear that using Pine Street as a point of entry into a commercial project was not really well-received, so to speak. So we repaired back to the original plan, which is entering off of Mission Street, and there's also an access off the back onto Maple Avenue. We have retained that piece of property of 533 Pine Street, and you're going to see in later slides, I think we've done a really nice job of integrating it into not only the project itself, but the residential character of Pine Street and how it's going to appear. So if we go to page three, you'll see there's highlighted areas in pink, so I figured it would be easier to break off, oh, perfect, fantastic, thank you. So this will give you, I wanted to break it off building by building, tell you the difference of what you've seen previously and what we have now. First of all, the last project you saw had understory parking almost around, in the entirety of the site. It no longer has that, we have on-grade parking, and we have a parking structure, an automated parking structure that is at the central part of the site, I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we move through the plan. It's a really innovative way of providing parking on-site, I've used them on a number of projects, and they really make an efficient use of the space you have, so you can leave the rest of it for, you know, actual project use and/or permeable areas. So the first part of the project is the main hotel building, and that is facing Mission Street. Most notable about it is it has sixty-nine rooms. In our previous iterations, we had some larger condo units that had multiple bedrooms within a unit. We've since pared down the design, so it is really truly hotel rooms throughout the project. So we have a total of seventy-five, within this building, we have sixty-nine. Along the frontage of Mission, we still retain a very much a pedestrian nature, it's a two-story building, it still reflects the Mission Heritage design, which has been a directive we've received and have completely embraced. And you'll see, let's see, do you mind going to the next slide? Okay, so this will give you a flavor of the pedestrian experience as you're on Mission. Most notably here, at the point of the driveway entry, we have a setback that is pretty significant, I think it's, let's see here, it is twenty-four feet, and then it pops out at the main entry into the lobby, and that is just under eight feet. So all along the frontage, we really wanted to have it set back, we wanted it to be pedestrian in scale, assuming that we're going to have quite a bit of pedestrian traffic going back and forth in front of the project. The first two stories that you see along the frontage here are two stories, again, maintaining a two-story. We have a three-story element that is on the rear east wing, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. What's probably one of the most notable things about this project, when we first came to you, we were asking for a number of modifications, for building height, for other elements, we're no longer asking for modifications whatsoever. So we are fitting within the interpretation of the planned zone, which is going to be, you know, transit-oriented. We are also providing the original DR-20 zoning requirement of housing on the rear of the property. All the buildings are falling under the thirty-five-foot height limit for this area, so I think that's a very notable change. So it's much more, I think, in keeping with the neighborhood, so to speak. If you could go to the next slide. Here is the image as it would be viewed from the property line on, at Pine Street. You can see, this is the part where it is three-story, but again, very modest in height, and the fact that it falls under the thirty-five-foot height limit. One of the things that is notable on the previous screen was, the Design Review Committee had received a number of comments asking us to revisit some of the fenestrations, and perhaps relook at some of the arch orientation. So we've taken that feedback into consideration, we're in the midst of actually reworking that design now. When we have a full application and bringing that to staff, we'll also have a 3D model, so you can really see what that looks like in real time. So that was excellent feedback, if we can go to the next slide. So this is at the interior of the site, looking into, toward the hotel building, so you can see, again, the front of the project facing Mission is again two-story, the internal element that is three-story is facing inward toward the courtyard itself, and again, we have a max height of thirty-four feet, ten inches. Next slide. This again is just a, yeah, I think we have to go forward the other way, yeah. Okay, so this is from the interior of the courtyard, looking toward Mission Street, just another visual image. We really spent some time articulating this building, both from the interior, as well as from the exterior pedestrian experience. We really want it to be special, both for the users, as well as the people walking by. Next. This is just a sample floor plan of each of the floor, you'll see there's an entry lobby, this is the first floor. We do have a fitness area, and then we have rooms that feed off of those main corridors, you can see they're more modest in size, more in keeping with a traditional hotel room design. And these are just the upper floors, and that's the third floor. One of the things we should point out, I think that question came up on the previous project, is we will absolutely be studying photovoltaic as part of the design on this project. So, again, if you can identify the buildings that are marked in pink, so this is a later iteration that you have not yet seen, and again, I'm thinking it is a wonderful solution for integrating the project into a residential neighborhood. So each one of those buildings houses three hotel units, that's one-story in character. And they each have, you know, a dedicated parking space, they will have access to kind of a private garden area. And if we go to the next elevation, I'll give you a flavor of what that's going to look like on Pine Street. So the third image that you'll see, that is technically the rear of our building E, but that's what the visual will be facing Pine Street, so very much residential in character. And one of the pieces of feedback that we received from Design Review Committee, which was quite good, is suggesting that we go ahead and enclose that with a residential-style fence or wrought iron, we haven't gotten that far to really get into the design elements of that, to really enclose that. So it can be somewhat of a private garden, and there won't be the chance of, let's say, hotel traffic coming in and out onto the Pine Street neighborhood, which is residential in character. So we've gone ahead and included that feedback in our future modeling. Next slide. So this gives you an idea of what that, each one of those cabanas are laid out like, very simplistic, and they each have one, or three hotel units. Next. This gives you a flavor of, again, what that building will look like as you're ambulating along Pine Street. We will, again, have 3D modeling where we will lay our imaging into the actual visuals of Pine Street, so you'll see how those buildings articulate in the background, but again, the intention was here to show you how that has been, that building D and E have been articulated to be very residential in character. So this is Building B, this is back, this is our multifamily project, yes? Yes? That is pointing to Building D and E. So you can see, there's a legend at the bottom telling you the view that you're looking at, and we're just pointing down to the building that you're seeing.
Thank you.
So this is Building B, this is a multifamily building, we've intentionally are adhering to the underlying zoning, I think you've all heard this before, in understanding that there's a need for multifamily. In studying the different types of multifamily that don't exist in Solvang, some of the more modest studio or one-bedrooms are, you know, hard to come by. And given this building would be right in the middle of downtown, the idea was to provide studio units that would be completely privatized, but they'd be an average of about four-hundred-and-twenty square feet, which sounds small, but I don't know if any of you have had a chance to see the mock-up that Ed had built over at the lumberyard, and I think he's left it up so that you can continue to review that. Yeah, they're quite spacious, yeah, and his intention, he really wanted, he said, "Look, if I'm going to have these studio units here, I want them, I want people to be able to live with dignity, they're going to have nice kitchens, really large bathrooms, and they're all going to have a really significant window." And he has been approached by a number of business owners here in town that said, "Look, once this project is realized, we are very interested in pursuing renting some of these for our downtown workers." So that was the intention, to provide housing for people that live in the downtown and work in the downtown, or perhaps are aging out of larger homes and want to be locationally more accessible to the downtown area. So we have parking for all of those units, each have one parking space, we also have nine parking spaces. I want to be very clear, we're not asking for any type of shared parking accommodation between the hotel and the residential units, they're both individually parked. And the majority of the microunit parking will be provided in that parker, which we'll go into a little more detail on. Let me show the next one.
I have just a comment on the title of multifamily. A family of more than two people, I think, would have a problem living in four-hundred-and-twenty square feet, and so I'm not sure. Just the name implies that a family of two, three, four, or five people could move into one of these units, and I don't think that'll really work.
And you are correct there, unfortunately, zoning definitions haven't really evolved as quickly as some of these newer, unique products that are coming to the marketplace now. So as far as zoning is concerned, it's still considered multifamily, but you are correct, they are intended for a single user, or perhaps two at the most. And when we've studied both the traffic impacts, water use, all of those things, we've looked at 1.5 persons per unit.
Thank you.
Okay, so this gives you a flavor of the project from the interior. You'll probably remember that the previous proposal on this project had suggested a total building height of four stories, and we were going to have one story of understory parking. We felt that that was consistent with the experience that you had on Maple, because there's a number of three-story units on the other side of the street. But again, in really looking at a product that is going to be embraced by the community, we revisited that, and have embraced the idea of the car parker, which you'll see shortly, so that could bring the whole building down by a story. So the building height is thirty-four feet, ten inches, I think the next slide shows the experience. I think the next slide shows the experience. I'll have to go to the next one. There you go. This will be the experience for Maple. So see that dotted line across the top? So we have quite a significant grade differential between Maple and this project, and it drops down into our project. So the actual experience is going to be just a little over two stories. So much more modest in character. Next slide. This gives you a flavor of the project as it's facing adjacent to the residential units, residential housing on Pine Street. Next. So this is very interesting. Design Review Committee really started looking at the users of this building, and they said, "Look, we'd like to see a place where they could have, you know, some sort of socialized gathering, or a place where they could eat outside, maybe have a barbecue experience. Can you look at providing them some sort of communal space that they can use that's privatized from the hotel itself?" So we had originally anticipated a community room, and you can see that on our legend with the arrow pointing to it already. But the more we talked about it, it seemed that an open-air, first-story structure would probably, or first-story space would probably be, you know, a better fit, and it was responding to Design Review Committee's comments. So we have not taken the design further, but the expectation is in the next iteration of the drawing that that space there will be open-air to the outside, and will have seating and that type of thing. And again, it will be privatized from the rest of the hotel uses. So here's a car parker. This is Building C. It's that central part of the project. It has automated spaces for 48 cars. And the way that does that, I'm sure all of you have some familiarity with this, there's a pit, and it's about 10 feet deep, 10 to 12 feet deep. And you will move your car into the parking space, and they're surprisingly easy to use. It's almost like a puzzle piece. You push your button, you identify who you are, and it moves the cars around. And then when you come back to claim your car, you again push your identification button, and it brings your car right back out to you, and you can pull it out of your space. We felt that these were more appropriate for the multifamily rather than the hotel users, just because they'd have a familiarity with them over time. These are used on some projects that I have worked on in Isla Vista, and they have been outrageously successful. I was myself somewhat cynical about their durability, but they are just bulletproof, and they make the most of a much smaller space. And then the design team, what they've also done is we're going to have bike parking on one of these side parts of the building, enclosed. And then on the rear portion facing the hotel pool, you'll see the articulation of that facade if we can move it forward. This is just kind of gives you a floor plan of what that looks like. So this would be the element that would be facing onto the pool. And one of the comments we received from Design Review Committee, which I think was dead-on, was that they wanted to see more trellis elements coming out from it, so that the users had more shade, especially we're all experiencing that right now, shade is good, and that that would be an area for socialization. And it really, I think, beautifully disguises the fact that this is a parking structure. Next slide. So this gives you a flavor of what it looks like in the back, and as the cars would be entering into each one of the stalls. Here's a side elevation on either side, just so you can get a flavor for what that looks like.
Is that an elevator?
On the car parker?
East elevation.
Yeah, that is just part of the mechanical equipment. It's not an actual elevator. Okay. So in this element, color materials board, we originally had some very bright white colors to reflect the building, as well as more significant. And I apologize, the verbiage underneath the colors, I didn't have a chance to change in time. So what is correct are the actual color samples themselves. Design Review Committee noted that really bright white was not really a fit in their heads with this particular project. They want it to reflect, let's say, the Veterans Building or some of the other uses around, and be a little more subtle in character. So they recommended that we look at a more of a vanilla shade, so we have. They also suggested that the roof color not be so bright, and look at something that was softer, so we also have a more subtle Mocha Blend tile. And again, Design Review Committee has not yet seen these. They'll probably have further commentary and refinements, but this is our first shot. Next. Here are some of our exterior lighting choices. They all respect the night sky requirements. We have simple site bollard lighting throughout the site, and then we have like mission bell lighting that would be lighting in the parking lot. This is just a photometric study, just confirming that we are maintaining all of our lighting with, on the project itself. Again, that's, I know, very tiny for you to really give any type of detail on. Site landscape plan. This received a lot of comments, so we are very much revisiting this in some total. We had our first design that we showed to Design Review Committee. There was a couple committee members that were very knowledgeable about the microclimate that is Solvang, and they encouraged that we revisit it, our plan and our palette dramatically. So we are. I don't have detail on that yet, and I believe that we're going to be reaching out to at least one of the Design Review Committee members that had a lot of knowledge, just to get a little more feedback from her. Everything, of course, is going to be drought-tolerant, native when possible, or Mediterranean and consistent, but we also have a lot of variations in temperature here, so that's going to be something we are going to revisit. I will note, we will also be looking at providing more planting pockets. That was a recommendation that we received, as well as looking at some very large, large potted items in some of the social areas.
Did the DRC put an emphasis on drought tolerant?
Absolutely. Yes. And I, you know, just speaking to that, I don't have a slide to show you right now, but it is abundantly clear on any project anywhere in California moving forward that water's an issue. And we've looked at that from the very beginning. Ed is very, very committed to resource management. And so we have already run our fixture counts based on what the California Green Building Code will allow as a maximum, and that's about six acre-feet per year. And Ed wanted to beat that. So we've been digging deep into our fixtures, finding water-wise fixtures, appliances, energy-wise appliances, and fixtures that will also be really functional, but will use limited water. And at this point, we are at about just a little over three acre-feet instead of six. So that's a huge jump, and I would hazard to say we're not done yet. So we're going to put more time into that, but we hear that loud and clear, and it's an important feature to include.
Are you also looking into the possibility of using gray water for your plants?
It's notable that you had mentioned that. I was just talking to Ed about that a couple days ago. We're absolutely, absolutely looking at it. The only issue that we do have with the hotel use is you have the health code that you have to adhere to, and they, excuse me, are not moving quite as fast as the technology of gray water. But we are interpreting where we can find those resources on-site, and where we can filter it, where we can reuse it with the landscaping. The landscaping is about 0.72 acres-feet per year of water, but yeah, absolutely, it's a consideration.
Good. Thank you.
And might I suggest trees with a deeper root system, so you don't have to worry about trip hazards?
Yeah, narrow and deep. Yes.
They can have shallow root system, uplift sidewalks and things like that.
Absolutely. Yeah, and again, that's going to take quite a bit more study, and we are securing proposals right now from landscape architects that have worked and successfully created landscapes within the city of Solvang that look good 10 years down the line. But yes, that is, that is one of those areas we still have a lot yet to do. I'll also note, just for, you know, kind of a little bit of flavor around the remainder of what we're working on, the civil design. We're planning to have underground retention. That will be down along the frontage of the project. So it'll be underground, and it will percolate slowly into the soil at an approvable rate so that we're going to adhere to Tier 3 or Tier 4 standards. I'm not exactly sure where we're going to fall, but that's definitely something we're paying attention to. And I think that's it. I'd love to get your feedback.
Before we go any further, I'd like to just cover a couple of additional points. Thank you very much, Julie. That was great. So procedurally, the property is currently zoned DR-20, which does not allow for hotel. So the direction that the project's moving is to rezone and general plan change the property to TRC, to its related commercial, which does allow for the hotel and a secondary use of residential. That process right now is going through environmental review. So we anticipate that we're probably three to four months out from having an environmental review, and it could be, you know, timing's everything, but of having a draft environmental review document that would be available for public review. The EIR would go through 45-day review period with public comment, and then response to comments, and ultimately, it will go back through the DRC review, Planning Commission review, and ultimately to the City Council for review. So over the course of the next four, six, eight months, that's kind of the process that we're looking at. We did receive a number of comments for the project. You have them in front of you. One was from Nancy Emerson, a good comment letter, as well as Lansing Duncan. We also received a substantial package from the attorneys representing the carpenters' union, and, you know, that information will be forwarded onto the environmental review consultant to address their comments and see what concerns they have raised in regards to the project. So at this point, we're looking forward to public comment and then also your comments on the project.
Okay, just a quick question on what you just said. It's going to be rezoned, but that's going to be part of the general plan?
Correct.
So, and the general plan isn't expected to be finalized till, like, next year at this time? Is that correct?
I'm not going to speak to the timing, because it'll be done in 2023.
Right, okay.
Excuse me, it's going to be voted on in 2023, or it's going to be done in 2023?
I don't have the schedule in front of me in regards to what is anticipated for each one of the steps, but it's currently undergoing the environmental review portion of the process, and there's going to be some presentations to both the Planning Commission and City Council here soon. And then we'll move on into the actual hearings in 2023.
I think the original plan was to have it finished, done, published by the end of And, you know, schedules change, but I think that was the original plan.
Correct.
And, well, let's go to public comment, and then I'll ask other questions. Do I have anybody here that would like to speak on this? Nobody here online? Who have we got? We've got three people. Who's the first? Sheila, can you hear me?
Are you talking to me? Sheila Benedict?
Yes.
Okay. I couldn't tell, because Jonathan's hand was up before mine, so I didn't know, but I'll be very happy to address you. First of all, the only projects that I think should even be considered is where low-income housing is concerned, and some help for the homeless, which a lot of those are military, ex-military. And other than that, these fancy plans should be put on hold. We have a serious water problem here, and yet the city of Solvang had its state of the city, and they're in really good shape. So if they're in that good a shape, we don't need to worry about more bedtacks, and we don't need to worry about fancy hotels with very high-priced rooms. I have no idea what the rents were planned for these family parts, whether they were for low-income or boutique-type apartments. But be that as it may, the other question I have is where the shoe mash are concerned. Have they been notified of the fact that there's going to be a lot of digging there? I worked at the Mission for 18 years. I know all about digging. I know all about ground-penetrating radar and the forensic canines, because I'm the one that wrote the grants to bring them in, because you're not allowed to go more than 12 inches in any area where there might be some cadavers or artifacts or anything else. So I don't know if they have been approached or not. As far as this lady is concerned, she keeps calling it Mission Street. It is Mission Drive, and it is a thoroughfare, and it is dead stop at certain times of the day where you can barely get through town. I don't know what a project like this would add to, but all in all, having said all that, that still remains that it should be put on long-term hold to weaken resolve all of the water issues and a lot of other things that need to be done. I agree with Susan Bott, who spoke earlier. We must put a hold on it. It just should not go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Who else do we have? We should probably go in the order. Do we know what order they put their hands up?
Nancy Johnston should be next. I mean Nancy Emerson, sorry.
Okay, Nancy Emerson. Do you have some comments to make on this project?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Nancy Emerson, representing WeWatch. This is a much better project than the earlier version, but it's still in its early stages, and it was very encouraging to see how responsive the project is being to the comments of the DRC, which also reflected a letter from Lansing Duncan. We hope your conceptual discussion and review will be specific enough to benefit the applicant staff while your thoroughness reassures the public, the purpose of this informal hearing. We need your input on issues such as use of the parcel space, e.g., the density of buildings and parking needed landscaping. Two, parking spaces. We need to look at all three of the developers' projects in this block. The public does not yet know how many parking spaces are required for the Italian deli and the number available there. Could something be worked out so it could provide boutique hotel parking? If a guest, I'd prefer it there. Three, its relationship to the neighborhood, including the impact on the new senior center. Four, a sense, a beginning sense of what cumulative traffic impacts may be on Mission, Alice Hall, and Maple, based on recent traffic studies. Five, availability of water, and I did not talk about this in the letter. We know residents are not meeting required water conservation requirements, but nothing has been said about how hotels and motels are doing. If not well, is there any way this project can reduce water use enough to make it feasible to add another hotel and a significant number of housing units? Plant choices are one-way, and I would discourage potted plants because they're and I would discourage potted plants because they're water-intensive. And finally, six, will the developer offer some long-term affordable employee housing as a trade-off for city-provided benefits? Affordable by design is not long-term affordable. We think that all of the information that was given and the changes that are being considered for building colors and design and landscape are important to the development's character and how well it blends with the surrounding historic buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Nancy, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
I was just thanking you.
Thank you.
Jonathan? Jonathan Duran? Are you there?
Jonathan, you're still showing up as muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that technology. Hello, everyone. My name is Jonathan Duran. I'm a member out of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters Local Eight Oh Five. I think a development like this, our aspect of what we heard so far is hey, we need more, the concerns about the water, the concerns about the native Shumash tribes there. What our concerns are is about the people going to be building these projects. A lot of times what we find is contractors, developers, they come in, they bring their people from outside the area, and the workforce brings in that aspect of pollution with the travel time coming in. And after a day, the revenue doesn't stay within solving. What we want, what we want to see is the developer and the contractors be able to utilize skilled and trained workforce, be able to take advantage of credit apprenticeship programs within South Auburn County and the South Elizabeth County, where most of our workforce comes from. On the same note is, we give opportunities for individuals that are within the city, from either from high schools, women, veterans, second chance individuals, to be able to work on these projects and be able to put money right back into our own community. One of the things that I'm a part of, I'm one of the representatives that handles what we call our program. It's called Career Connections. It's a pre-apprenticeship program that we're trying to implement at the high school level and be able to re-engage the CTE programs there. And with this, these students that are going through this program will have an opportunity to work local and within the area that they live in. The hardest thing about becoming an apprentice is, as soon as you're there, you're going to have to drive to go to work. But by having contractors and developers partnering with us and to be able to have an opportunity to work close to home and be able to have, be able to pay, be able to work here and also spend our money here, it's just, it's a ripple effect. So our concerns is a have an opportunity to work close to home, utilize skilled and trained workforce, or some type of agreement like that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan. Who we got next?
Scotty Zimmerman. Are you ready?
Good evening. Live. Good evening, everyone. My name is Scotty Zimmerman. I'm a member of Local Eight Oh Five, Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Maybe locally, kids recruit here, play sports here, all up and down the coast. I kind of echo what Sheila mentioned with the slow income issue. And a lot of that, obviously, is due to the cost of living. Obviously, that just continues to rise. Being a new member, being a skilled and trained member coming up out of an apprenticeship program, I've always been paid an inferior standard of wage. I mean, I've had to travel a lot, I've had to leave my family, not be able to coach my kids' teams. Now you name it, the list goes on. And I know, like, guys who are in the trade that are on, you know, the other side of it. They're in the, they're caught up framing up these hotels, residential housing tracks, everything else, and are getting paid a subpar wage. A lot of due coming from out of the area, which does create an environmental, you know, concern. When you're talking about a climate action plan, like California, in California, the High Ridge Jobs Climate Action Plan for 2030. They're trying to limit the amount of traveling back and forth with work. So we need to do the same here locally. Put a plan in place that generates good jobs, good wages, good benefits. And for people who are actually building these, can afford to live there as well. More often than not, dealerships, the guys who are building any third dealerships here locally can't even afford to buy the car from the lot. Building houses here, you see it all over, you know, San Luis County, South Auburn County, can't afford homes here. We need to, need to resolve that issue. We need to put some kind of plan in place that utilizes local skilled and trained workforce and a proper apprenticeship program to teach guys how to build it right and provide longevity. Not just come in, build it, okay, you go back and, you commute three hours in and out. I thank you for your time, and good evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Scotty Zimmerman?
No, that was what we just heard from Lansing Duncan.
Lansing.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. And it's interesting to see how this project has evolved. We've seen so many different versions of it. And I have to say that this is the best version we've seen so far. But there are a number of issues that still remain. I hope that you got my letter. I hope you've had the opportunity to actually read it because some of the issues are rather detailed. I do want to chime in with Nancy Emerson regarding the affordability for the housing units. Affordability by design is definitely not long-term affordability. And that would certainly be a benefit here when you consider that the city is basically rezoning this property for the applicant. It would be nice to see something in return. But my real concern is there remains just simply too much development proposed for the site. Because you have built the housing and the hotel, and now you're adding non-parking spaces for a project somewhere else. That, I think, is really inappropriate. And if you didn't have those non-parking spaces, you could have amenities for the multiple unit, or you could have more landscaping, which this project really needs. Right now, all the landscaping is stuck either on Maple or Mission, and those are appropriate areas, but you need landscaping elsewhere, too. And the fact that you have an automated parking structure on the site obviously tells you that there's a lot of development packed on this site. Certainly, changing the access on Pine Street is an improvement. The interior circulation is better than ever before. But you're still dumping a whole lot of traffic at Mission and Alisal, one of the worst-performing intersections in the valley. And you still have people that will come in and out at Pine and Mission, which is one of the most dangerous intersections in the valley. Reduction in height certainly improves the aesthetic appearance of the structures and will help it in terms of relating to the surrounding units. The Mediterranean-style architecture has gotten better than what was proposed before. And I was glad to hear that the applicants are considering carefully the suggestions of the Design Review Committee, especially things like the color of the hotel. A hotel this big on Mission Street doesn't need to be bright white. It would be so much nicer if it were the same color, let's say, as the base hall. There are some refinements in the fenestration on some of the elevations that could occur. And I'm glad to hear they're considering that. There is a situation where certain elevations of the hotel, notably the east and west, retain insistently long uninterrupted sections of parapet wall above the third floor. These might be really, I believe, few carefully placed detail elements that make these pieces of architecture seem a little less modern and a little bit more traditional. It would be great if you didn't have those non-parking spaces so you could get some sort of amenities in for the multi-unit housing. I don't call it multifamily because the families, I don't think, are going to want to live there. I do think that changes to the landscape are warranted. I'm glad to hear that they're going to do that. But you should know also that simply there are some areas where there's no room for the plantings that are depicted on your plans. They're actually, you can't plant plantings where there's actually a retaining wall in the middle of that planter. And you're trying to plant a tree where there's a retaining wall. This actually can exist in a number of places on the drawings. So here is one of the reasons why you need to expand the landscape areas if you're really attempting to get the trees that have been depicted on the plans that you see. And of course, that wonderful specimen cedar and the many oaks on the site are basically, a lot of them, I think, are going to go. So you won't have very landscaping. I do hope that the applicant is able to find an appropriate home for the historic building in the town site. That's really important. And I think it will be a sad day when we lose our ability to see that structure at the entrance to our community. This is a really important site. So I think the city has to assure that it's the very best development possible. And I really don't know how we're going to supply the water for it. So I think you guys should be thinking about that, too. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Lansing.
Pedro Toscano?
Mr. Toscano?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Pedro Toscano. Just like my associates before me, I am also with the Carpenter's Local Eight Oh Five. And I live in the vicinity of this upcoming project. As a matter of fact, because I work representing members in, throughout Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, San Luis Obispo County, I spend my money in solving. As a matter of fact, I was there this weekend. It was my wife's birthday. She loves solving. We patronized business. As a matter of fact, I gotta go back and buy some more Christmas ornaments on the Christmas store over there. I, we love solving. And just like every one of my members, that we encourage them, wherever they work, they spend their money because it only creates a bigger, it impacts the economical calculations in that city. Teachers get hired, more teachers get hired, officers, firemen, more of them get better equipped. So, yes, we would like to help you build this project. We are in favor of this project. We would like to help you build it with skilled and trained workforce, preventing wage rate, and those things could get kicked in, you know? So, again, I am behind this project. All I would like yourselves to do is to allow us skilled and trained workforce to come in and let us bring in the skilled and trained workforce from your areas, the students from around your areas that just graduated. They're coming to our apprenticeships and asking us for career jobs. So some of them don't want to do, you know, the high-tech jobs. They want to do manual work, you know? So give us a chance. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I think we've gotten all of the comments from the Zoom. Yes. Some of you still have your hand up, but I think you've all spoken.
Okay, then we'll bring it back to the mission for discussion, comment, suggestions. Would you like to start? I'll start. I actually have a couple of questions for the development team, if that's possible. Hi. I guess I'll start with the elephant in the room. And again, it's about the water usage. Obviously, it's a really serious situation. And I don't know if you know this, but all of the citizens in Solvang had just received a notice in their mail, in their water bill, saying that there was going to be a fine or levy for excessive use. So you briefly talked about some of the plans, but I'd like to know a little bit more in-depth what the plans are going to be. And then specifically, when you're done with that, we should talk about the pool and how many gallons it's going to take to fill and what it takes to maintain. And then I believe that in between the two, there's two units on Pine Street. It appears that there's a fountain there in between those two units. And I just, we should just have that conversation and to better understand the usage, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
You know, as I spoke earlier, we were still very much, this is a concept review, so we haven't really gotten into design development so we can really look at some innovative solutions. But at this point, what we have done is looked at fixture counts throughout the project, both in the multifamily and in the hotel, as well as looking at the landscape irrigation requirements. And just taking at a baseline, and again, that's the best comparison I can give you right now, is the California Green Building Code gives you a maximum anticipating California standards for water. And they're quoted, based on our number of units, our number of fixtures, there is a max of about six acre-feet per year. And again, we've already dug deep into that and started looking at other alternatives for water-wise fixtures, low flow. You know, you've seen some of the toilets where you can choose which action you'd like to take on it, a variety of different modalities. And we already, we're very confident already that we can have that, which is very significant. And again, in working with Ed, he's very committed to resource conservation. So he's not finished. So once we get into design development issues, let's say of gray water, of alternate uses of, I mean, some of the technologies have not yet been refined yet, but they're in process, or let's say if you are able to gather stormwater runoff and it goes into a retention system, can you reuse some of that water for irrigation on your site? So those are some of the elements we're absolutely looking at. And we hear it loud and clear. And, you know, we're receiving, we're on the cusp of receiving the same notices in Santa Barbara. It's a statewide thing. It's not going away. So that is the intent.
Thank you for that. Does the measure of water that you are forecasting to be using, does that include the pool as well?
Yes, it does. But, yeah, but the pool is not, you know, emptied and refilled on a regular basis. It's treated and then managed for evaporation.
Right.
Right.
Thank you. In the hotel, are you going to have tubs or showers, or both?
You know, I can't tell you that right now. We haven't gone so far as to call that out.
Okay.
But do you have comments on that, that I can gather and take back?
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then are you planning on doing laundry onsite? Or are you going to be sending it out?
Yeah, laundry will not be done onsite.
When it comes to the apartment buildings, the long stay, do you, is there a plan for a minimum stay in those apartments?
They're going to be leased apartments, so they would be, you know, hopefully would be on an annual basis. And then they would be, you know, they would go through all the same sort of rental laws that would apply to other multifamily in the state of California.
Well, I'm asking because there are some developers who would want to do a project like this and then put it in the Airbnbs or the VRBOs, especially if we change the zoning where it's allowed.
Right. No, the intent is that they really truly are multifamily, that they truly are for the workers downtown. And as I've noted, Ed has been approached by a number of business owners that now have staff that are that now have staff that are coming from faraway Santa Maria, that type of thing. They're like, hey, it would be so great if they could live and work here.
Right, thank you. And then in regards to the parking, there's seven, eight spots for the hotel and three spots for the employees. And then it said that there's going to be about 15 employees. Is that really realistic for a property like this to have 15 employees?
It is not a particularly large property as a whole, you know? So it doesn't have a dining establishment in it any longer. It doesn't, I mean, it has a fitness room, so it is pretty limited.
And then, so there is no food service, then? Have you removed food service?
Yeah, there's no food service right now.
And that was a big change.
That was a very big change. And as you've all kind of heard peripherally, Ed St. George is working on a pre-existing space that he's going to lease and turn into a restaurant across the street.
Food service can come from the deli?
Yeah, pretty much. Well, people could go over there and eat. That's the intention.
Right. Thank you for answering my questions.
I have a question about, okay?
Yes?
Have you consulted with Caltrans on that driveway onto Mission? I know, like, down at the shopping center and stuff, they wouldn't let them put in the driveway off of Mission.
What we've done at this point, again, we're in concept stage. We have developed a traffic study that was done by ATE, and they did consult with Caltrans. We have a pre-existing curb cut there, so that's part of, you know, our positioning at this point is that there's already a driveway there. Reuse the existing driveway. I can imagine that there could be some permutations of how that dialogue goes when we get into a full application and is part of the EIR that's developed for the general plan.
I'm concerned about basically left turns. Left turns in and left turns out. If that's going to be allowed, it's going to be.
I understand your positioning on that, yeah. All of that is going to be analyzed as part of a full application. And I'll take that as a point now so that we make sure that it's addressed as part of our project narrative. Does that work?
Yeah, it's, as long as you keep it in mind. I appreciate it.
The only comment I had about this was, I think it was a good idea to bring this project forward because people keep asking about it. It is a big, like Scott said, elephant in the room project. So the fact that they're coming out and gauging, I think, is good. So the fact that people make comments about it and learn about what's going on, because we were kind of in the dark for a little while. It's good to see that things are going. The other question I had, Lori, is because the general plan is getting updated and it sounds like it's going to be encompassed in the DRC, does that mean this project can get approved before that? Or are they waiting to do that first so we're not looking at approving this project into 2023? Obviously, it's going to, or it's not 2020, we're halfway through 2022, more than that, so. But is it like looking 2023 getting approval? Or what's the game plan?
Yes, good question. The zoning designation and general plan change need to happen first. The environmental review document for this site and the analysis that will be done will be on a project of this type. And as we evolve it further, we'll be looking at it. But once the general plan change and rezone is adopted as part of the general plan update, then the development plan and the conditions of approval and all the permutations of the project will be reviewed again through DRC and the Planning Commission. At that point, it might not need to go to the city council unless it's appealed, based on what designation that they have. I do want to answer one question that Commissioner Gold raised. It's very important for us in our reporting to the state housing agencies that we maintain these units as housing units and not on vacation rentals. Because we need to report that to the state and maintain our housing. And that's why one of the provisions within the city of Santa Maria is vacation rentals are not allowed in the residential zones. And that's how we maintain our housing products that are currently existing.
Is the RENA numbers you're talking about?
Pardon me?
RENA?
RENA numbers.
Yes, yes, our housing requirements.
But this, once it's rezoned, won't be in the residential zone anymore. It'll be in the DRC, which does allow that.
But we will condition-
So would that be one of the conditions of approval that?
Correct. This will be conditioned to maintain those housing units. I hate the word "in perpetuity", but it will be maintained as designated housing for the city.
Mixed use don't count towards RENA numbers, then? So if the DRC allowed mixed-use housing upstairs, work downstairs, it would not count, or would count towards RENA numbers?
Yes, and I believe that that's one of the considerations of the update to the general plan is encouraging more infill residential units within the DRC zone. What we need to do is make sure that those don't eventually transition into vacation rentals. It's for housing, not hotel rooms.
Well, then that's why it's so important that we're talking about this now, because this is on the corner of Maple and Pine, two residential areas to prohibit nightly rentals with VRBOs or whatever other sign. That's why it's critical that we talk about this now and make that decision.
I just have a question about his project that he has on the corner of Alisal and 246, where he's going to put the little cottages. He is expecting to use some of the parking at the hotel for those cottages?
I'm not working on that project in detail, but I have seen it and I'm aware of the descriptive on it. And the expectation from operations is that, yes, they're all, there's nine modest cottages for overnight accommodations. So the management of them would occur out of the larger hotel. So the intent is that, yes, folks would come and park, and then they would be taken over to the cottage units just so that you're not creating another clutter of parking or people attempting to park on the street.
So it's more like valet parking?
It's valet parking, yes. And they'll be checked in at the hotel, yes.
And then do they call and request their car to be brought to them?
No, they would come back. It's just a little over 500 feet away. It's not, it's across the street and around the corner. So what would happen is they would call for a valet service to come and pick up their bags. But, you know, they likely would walk over, is my guess.
So it creates additional traffic?
Pardon me?
It creates additional traffic.
Yeah. That will be interesting in the traffic study.
We had a number of public comments about using local labor in construction and what have you. Do you normally consider that in your projects? And is it under consideration for this one?
You know, I-
Or is it too soon to ask that question?
It is very, very early, just because we're a concept review. I can just speak to you of Ed St. George and how he does business. He very much is a local employer, absolutely. And he absolutely encourages, like, if you look within his, not only his construction team, but within his operations and management team of his buildings, he fosters youth coming in and working on those projects. So my guess is he would embrace the same sort of concept, you know? So that's something to be discussed further, but that's the way he does business.
I just hope that those comments don't fall on deaf ears.
Yes.
And I know in the county, there's requirements where you have to use prevailing wage and as much as possible, local labor. So, and I don't think we have that requirement here, but I think it's a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah, I have the great fortune of working on a number of other projects that include either some sort of subsidy. I'm actually working on the Harry's House project that is further down on 246. And that absolutely is using tax credit dollars that is set up at a prevailing wage, wage rate. I will tell you, just because I underwrite projects, that the union rates here or the skilled labor rates here in Santa Barbara are not far from a prevailing wage rate. So, I mean, skilled labor is skilled labor. And, you know, I completely understand the statements that were made about, you know, having, you know, a living wage that you can continue to live and work here. My husband's a GC. I know how that goes. Yeah, but Ed is, if you know anything about him, he grew up as a GC, and he started as a carpenter. And he's very much an advocate of using local people. That's just the way he does business always.
So just a general comment to reiterate what a lot of people have said. I was very impressed that with the way you've scaled things down, you brought the height down from 45 feet to 34 feet 10 inches. That's very impressive. You're not asking for parking spaces from the city anymore. And I'm really impressed that you're making a very substantial effort to listen and implement what people's concerns or address what people's concerns are.
Thank you. I will tell you, your staff has been some of the most approachable staff we've worked with. There's been a lot of iterative dialogue. They've given us a lot of guidance. And the DRC, I mean, that was the most delightful design review meeting I've ever been in. They just gave us a lot of really good color and feedback. And you could tell they were very passionate about it. So I think this has been a joint labor to get it to this point. And we still have some more work to go, but I agree with you. It's really coming along nicely.
And a question for you, Lori. Are there any particular things that we need to be thinking about or to address other than just general comments?
Well, the only, I would suggest taking a look through the letter from the carpenters' unions. They are providing these kind of letters throughout the state on projects, so there's a lot of information in there. And we will be forwarding that to the environmental consultant to address the points that they've raised, which is required by CEQA to address vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gas emissions, air quality. So this will be just woven into the document. And so I think at this point, we've heard, if there's any other comments, you know, if anything new comes up, we can bring this back to the Planning Commission again. But in the meantime, we'll let Julie get back to work and we will continue to move this project forward.
I do have one more question. Sorry. With the CHUMASH, are you working with them? Or is the city working with them on your behalf?
We've engaged Brent Leffwitch, who's an archaeologist, archaeological consultant, as well as a cultural technician. And he has a wonderful relationship with the CHUMASH board. So we've already been back and forth. At this point, there doesn't seem to be any evidence on site, but it is a very active dialogue.
Good. Thank you.
And from the city's side, we have reached out through SB 52 to the state law in contacting the CHUMASH. The project has evolved a little bit, so we've held off doing full engagement. But now that there's an EIR involved, we are going to re-engage with them and working with their consultants and with the CHUMASH. We will keep this negotiations, this review, this deliberation on what resources are there so that once the EIR is out for public review, we have the CHUMASH's engagement and involvement in the mitigation measures that will be included in the EIR.
Okay. I just asked a question because it always comes up. So next time that comes up, we can say yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other comments? Okay. Any Planning Commissioners' comments in general on other things? Do you want to rejoin us?
I can for a second, and then we're all done, right?
Yeah. Just asking for Commissioner's comments on whatever.
Okay, I'm going to bring up the parking study again. What are we going to do about it?
The direction-
For the deli, yeah, for the deli. What are we going to do?
So what we're going to do is I'm going to be working with the city attorney. We will reach out to the Public Works Director. And Caltrans will bring it back to you either at the next meeting or the following one, depending on how much time we need. And we will give instructions as to how we can open up the record or at least discuss the traffic analysis that was done. And so that's, I think, about as far as I can go because this is an agenda item, but we will report back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other staff comments?
We're still deliberating on whether we will have a meeting in October. We have a couple of projects that are just about ready to queue up, but we will let you know as soon as we can, within the next week or so, as to what is going to happen. I know that Xena is looking at bringing forward a Planning Commission workshop for the general plan update. And we'll get that information out to you as soon as she has it scheduled. And that's it for now.
Thank you, then. I think we're done. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Should we leave the blue folders here?
I'd like to take the table.